All open in meeting of August the 29th, 2024. I forgot. Everybody please rise with the pleasure of the evening.
For the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of Louisiana, one nation, one tribe, indivisible, and universal.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Mr. Lemay?
Here.
Mr. Nakco?
Mr. Getche?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Mr. Richardson, anybody signed up for public parents?
Negative, no.
Thank you, sir. Any school community communications? No. Report of the, uh, there is no report of the student representative. We're in the process of selecting a new student representative for the school year, and he will or she will hopefully be joining us at the next meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from June 20th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Unanimous. Uh, report of the treasurer, do I have a motion to waive the reading?
Waive the reading.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Unanimous. And a motion to approve the expenditures of $9,783,902.55.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. Unanimous. There is no report of the general counsel. Madam Superintendent.
Good evening. First, I'd like to welcome everybody back and just like to give you a brief report. We had a wonderful opening to the 2425 school year, and we're happy to be back and ready to go. And hopefully, this will be another very rewarding school year for our students and staff.
Yes, sir.
So the first item on my agenda, I'd like to ask the Assistant Superintendent Principal, Mr. Barton, to join us to give a brief introduction of one of our newly hired administrators.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So it's my pleasure to introduce Ariana Athanakis, who is our new mathematics science chairperson and new member of the leadership team. So, uh, welcome, Ariana.
Thank you.
Uh, she has an undergraduate degree from Cornell University in Animal Science, a master's in teaching biology from Pittsburgh State, and a doctoral degree from the University of Massachusetts at Lowell. She comes to us from Billerica Public Schools with a variety of teaching and leadership experiences, both in science and social education, and just a wide variety. I'm happy to say that Ariana has done a smashing job for the summertime and all the way into the beginning of the school year, and we can't be more pleased. So congratulations and welcome to Great Lowell.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
It was very nice to meet you all.
I'm sure you do a great job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Welcome.
Thank you.
Have a good year.
Enjoy your night.
So the next item on my agenda, I'd like to inform the committee that we were awarded a WEOWA Youth Services Grant from the Mass. High and Greater Lowell Workforce Board in the amount of $63,144 to provide services to 25 students in school that are at risk. The next item on my agenda, I'd like to inform the committee that we also were awarded a whole, a whole kids' garden grant in the amount of $3,000, and this garden grant will be used to fund our school community garden, which is supported by our students in our Transitional Occupations Program, otherwise known as TOPS.
Awesome.
Uh, before moving on to the next item on my agenda, I'd like to ask the chair if he would give permission to go out of order on the agenda items, and I'd like to move Agenda Item Four to the end of the report.
Sure.
Okay. So with that said, I would like to ask Assistant Superintendent Principal, Mr. Michael Barton, to come, come back up to join us to present the 24 through 26 Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan, the 24 through 26 Substance Use Prevention and Intervention Plan, as well as revisions to the 2425 Student Handbook. Mr. Barton?
Good evening, everyone. Um, so it's my pleasure to introduce the first program, which is the 2024-2026 Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. This plan represents some significant changes in the Massachusetts law regarding, um, both bullying as well as sexual, um, harassment. Um, you'll see in your packet, the changes are in red, the changes are in black that are consistent with what was previously put in. Uh, you'll notice that there's a definition of perpetrator here, which identifies someone who potentially done some harm toward a student. Uh, there's also an expansion of the definition of bullying, which includes no race, color, religious creed, and you'll see the change there as well. It identifies the resources the school district has in regards to bullying. It also represents an expansion with more detail of the Federal Ethical High School Bullying Prevention and Intervention Incident Reporting Form, which includes, um, an expanded definition of, um, the incident, which requires more details than just a general statement. It asks for specific dates, times, quotes, et cetera. It asks for a signature on the form. It gives a little bit more detail on what the school district is required to do in terms of investigation. Um, that is here as well. There's also a inclusion in here of the conclusions or thing, the outcomes of a bullying investigation, and provides greater detail as to the reporting process. Uh, so those are the changes to the 2024-26 Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye. Unanimous.
The substance abuse is, Mr. Richardson.
So the substance abuse plan, abuse plan, um, includes, um, virtually no changes with the exception of an update to the school support and family friends resources. So each year, we look through this book to ensure that these resources that are in the appendix are operable and active. Um, so you'll see that on page seven, the resources that are operable and active have been, uh, included or remain in the ones that are not crossed off, and those are the changes to the substance abuse plan.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Questions or comments? Hear none, all in favor, please say aye. Unanimous.
So, Mr. Barton, I'm just gonna ask, before you begin with your student handbook updates, if Mrs. Encarnasio can come up, because I know a big portion of the changes that you're going to ask approval for have to do with the revisions to our sexual harassment policy. So if Mrs. Encarnasio, our Title IX Coordinator and also our Director of School Counseling, could come up and share those changes, uh, for us, and then Mr. Barton will come back and finish up the changes in the student handbook.
Sure.
All right. I guess I can do the nice thing? All right, I'll spin. Thank you. Good evening. Happy school new year, new school year. Um, we had to talk about something nice and light, sexual harassment changes. So I have sort of the highlight reel of really what has changed in the body of, um, the policy and procedure for sex-based harassment, which is Title IX, and one of which is definitions. Um, and now, instead of saying sexual harassment, that is one of the changes, it is now sex-based harassment, because it actually has become a little more inclusive of, um, violent sexual acts as opposed to harassment, as we may have discussed it previously. That was always implied, but the language has become clearer, and now it is referred to as sex-based harassment instead of sexual harassment. Um, previously, a respondent or someone who's been accused of sex-based harassment would have been called an aggressor, and now that has changed to perpetrator. And the language around pregnancy and related conditions has been redefined and strengthened. That's actually a very large chunk of the Title IX changes that you'll see. Um, in your outline, it actually is like a page and a half now. And a lot of those changes really involve, um, clarification in what that looks like when we say that we need to, um, put in protections and make sure that they are able to access the curriculum and come to a safe work environment. You'll see there's a lot more language that sort of spells out what that might look like to give schools a little bit more ability to put, um, accommodations in place. One of the things from going through the policy, um, while there is a lot of changes, because with any language changes, obviously, it, it becomes wordy and you want to make sure your wording is correct, um, one of the biggest things that really shown through was, we didn't really have to make a lot of changes into how we do things. So like with the pregnancy and related conditions, one of the suggestions is a lactation area for staff or students to be able to access during the school day. That's something that's been in place at Great Lowell for a long time. So we had already had many of these changes. We were already doing it as just a matter of making sure students felt and staff felt safe in the building, um, but we did refine the language and increase the verbiage to make sure that policy and procedure is very clear to students, families, and employees in order to, um, maintain that safe environment. Um, some of the languages that are clarified is the reinforcement of just full protection for everybody around, um, sex-based harassment that the school district is required, and this isn't really a change for us, because it's sort of how we've always operated, based on our, our previous policy, that we respond promptly and that we put things in place to prevent a recurrence. Um, it also talks about retaliation and making sure that we were able to address retaliation should it occur for people who do choose to come forward. Again, these are things that we have always done here, but the language has just been strengthened and clarified. A lot of times, I think, when you write policy, it's clear when you're writing it, but I think the state has found these clarifications really help school districts move forward and ensure the safe environment. Um, and one of the things also already in place at Great Lowell, but language was strengthened, is that we are to provide supportive measures for anyone who comes forward with sex-based harassment allegations, and it continues to also provide supports to the respondent or the alleged perpetrator, because while an investigation goes on, no disciplinary action can be taken until the investigation is completed. Um, and then if, you know, depending on the finding, we could then decide if we were gonna, um, implement discipline. They also strengthen the language around the LGBTQI plus, um, just to reinforce that those students and staff will be, um, protected and safe within the school environment, and they'll be allowed to do their jobs and, um, access the curriculum. They also added a, a language called de minimis harm. So, um, that sort of comes into go, when you go forward with an allegation, and you go forward with a report, you're looking at whether or not it is, it, it, the alleged action created de minimis harm. So if it's, that really breaks down to, is it so minor that it is not worth considering, or the law would not take it into account? So that's part of the language that's been introduced into the policy in order to strengthen the investigation process, to make sure that things that go forward are appropriate investigations and fall with, fall under the category of the law. The other term, which is pretty common, is the preponderance of evidence, but that's really when you look at the outcome versus how you go forward. So the, that statement is, um, been introduced as a way to determine what's gonna meet, um, a complaint and what maybe wouldn't meet a complaint, but if someone's coming forward with an issue, that we're still moving forward to, to address it, it just might not reach the level of a Title IX investigation. So that clarifies that. Um, it also added language to support parent rights. So previously, under the law, if, if a student came forward or staff came forward and they had a complaint, and they didn't want to go forward with a formal complaint, and they were okay with an informal process, and they were okay with, um, whatever supportive measures we could offer, that, you know, the director of, um, Title IX could say, there's so much evidence based on what I'm looking at, that I am going forward with a formal complaint regardless of the person saying that they want to, or whether or not they're okay with the informal and the supportive measures. The language that has been added to the policy now, based on the new guidelines, is that parent rights have been strengthened, so that parents are, are allowed to act on behalf of their minor children. Should they, you know, students sometimes get overwhelmed minors, and sometimes parents feel very strongly that it's a difficult process, but with supportive measures and support from the school, they would still like to go forward with a formal complaint. So the language to strengthen parents' rights has been included now within the policy. Um, and confidentiality, oh, we also updated the discrimination, uh, nondiscrimination statement, as I think Mr. Barton already men, mentioned through the bullying statement, adding a few categories, and you'll, you'll see it. It's already updated on the website, um, and it's just, it's, the federal guidelines changed a little bit of the wording. Again, we're saying sex-based harassment instead of sexual harassment, so some of the wording has changed, so we updated it to make sure it's reflective of, um, the current government regulations. Um, one of the other things that it strengthened is the confidentiality piece. Obviously, in any investigation, you move forward with confidentiality. However, they've refined the language to really focus in on, um, the confidentiality applies to information that may have been gleaned as a result of going forward with a Title IX investigation. So it just puts some stronger language and some more, uh, firm guidelines around those confidentiality pieces to protect people's, people's privacy, both the, um, complainant and the respondent. And that kind of sums it up, that's the highlight reel, I guess, of the changes in the sex-based Title IX harassment.
I just had a question.
Yes, sir.
I was reading my homework, yeah, that, on the front page here. I didn't realize that, I guess because of all the changes, that, that pages change.
Yes. I did notice that as I was typing.
I was looking at 50 and 51, and it's just not there.
Right, sorry.
But it's about eight pages later.
The pages have changed, yes. Yep, and they'll be updating that in the final printing.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Well, you've done a lot of work on this, so congratulations. Some people like to think that, you know, schools and administrators have summers off, but this clearly defines how much work went into it. Uh, was this part of the student, the language, is that part of what the state, um, sort of has summarized and stuff like that?
Yeah, it, this all came as a result of the federal and state guidelines. They issue them to us, and then we make the changes accordingly to be in compliance.
Got you. Does this have a class that someone needs to take, or anybody, or?
One of the things that, um, we've always done, but also has been mentioned, is that we're required to do trainings. I'm actually signed up for the latest one.
Congratulations.
Yep. Uh, starting October 6th with, um, NYPD, the Middle Sex Youth Partnership.
Cool.
So, uh, yes, we are required to train. The, one of the things they talk a lot about in, in all the guidelines, and this is something we've always done here at Great Lowell anyway, is sort of really do the training to make sure investigations are impartial. You know, the students are coming, staff are coming with different complaints or issues, and you want to make sure that the investigators are trained to ask the right questions and, and have that, you know, neutral fact-finder, um, approach to anything that comes forward. So, um, the main office has been fantastic, being trained to help with the investigations. I do a lot of training. Um, the HR Director also does a lot of training. Um, I do as many as come my way, because this is a, a significant, um, law, and the importance of it is paramount to keeping students and staff safe.
Outstanding. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
Is there, at some point, if input is required by outside legal counsel?
Yes, we, we work with the lawyers to, to verify that the changes that have been made are accurate and on, on task with the federal and state guidelines. Like, nothing comes forward without, that they're looking at it.
I was just concerned if, uh, if I could make up a scenario as far as if, if parents wanted to be, if parents request.
Oh, not just in, in their own, I thought you meant just in writing it. I was like, no, they definitely check it, but you mean if like a, a case comes forward?
Yeah.
Yeah. If they, if a parent or guardian decided or employee wanted to bring their own lawyer, we would immediately involve our.
And that would probably be at the event that the parents did, and then the, the other side did, yeah.
Yeah, for sure. For sure. And we would consult if we felt that there was an area that was unclear. You know, there's, there's a lot of nuances to it, but you always want to make sure that you're operating within the correct guidelines, so.
Yep.
Yeah, we rely on them, whenever necessary.
Just wanted to raise the question.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm glad you asked.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Great job. Thank you.
Fantastic.
So, Mr. Barton, do you want to join us again?
So I have a motion to approve the Title IX policy. Please. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Nakco?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, as you just heard, Ms. Encarnasio describe the changes, those changes that are incorporated in the student handbook, um, they go into a similar level of detail regarding, um, any legal definitions of sex-based harassment, as well as examples of sex-based harassment that are included in the law and language. It also gives the description of pregnancy and parental status included in this, as well as how to make a complaint, the nature of a complaint. It describes the resolution process, the supportive measures that may exist for.
So everything that Mrs. Encarnasio discussed in our.
Yes.
School-wide policy is incorporated.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Unless anybody has any questions.
Second.
That was the only revision to the handbook, because we had recently approved the handbook, and then these changes were made in the way of comic, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on my agenda, I'd like to invite, uh, Mrs. Martinez, our Director of Enrollment and Information, to, uh, talk about our, uh, updated acceptable use, employee acceptable use policy.
Hello.
Two months' worth.
Good, good. So I'm here to give.
I was looking at the things.
I'm here to give a brief summary of the Great Lowell Regional Vocational Technical District's Acceptable Use Policy for Digital Information, Communication, and Technology Resources for 2024-25. Much of the language in this policy is really from the new tech policies outlined in the December 2023 Massachusetts Association of School Committees policy. So, so some of the, the piece on the scope, the, the, the policy applies to all district employees, students, families, and visitors, covering the use of digital resources. employees, students, families and visitors, covering the use of digital resources, data protection and communication. And then there are some key points about how the district supports a balance of security and access, um, as well as support ongoing digital citizenship instruction to students that align to the mass curriculum frameworks, um, and that all district business must be conducted using district provided email, email addresses and that data and other material files maintained on the, on the district systems may be subject to review, disclosure and discovery, and the district will cooperate fully with local, state and federal authorities concerning or related to any illegal activities or activities not in compliance with the district policies or government regulations. And that electronic messages may be subject to public records laws and FOIA requests and really that users must use digital resources responsibly, um, efficiently, ethically and legally regardless of where the physical location is while they're using district or, electronic devices, including computers, tablets, smartphones and other digital devices. Then it sort of goes through the acceptable use and that the access is provided for educational and business purposes and that users must follow the guidelines on supervision and ethical use and privacy and that prohibited activities include accessing inappropriate contact, cyberbullying and copyrighted. Then it, it talks a little bit about the student use and that the students, um, sign an AUP annually, as well as it aligns with our code of conduct.
So the kids already know this?
Yes, so they already sign. And then the, we go more into the employee use. Employees must use district accounts for all school-related work and communication and that personnel use should not interfere with the job duties or incur any additional costs to the district. And then some new pieces of looking at social media guidelines, that employees should maintain professionalism and avoid discussing confidential information across social media and that they should not friend, um, current students or parents on personal social media. Then it goes on to the network usage and security and really that the district reserves the right, again, to monitor and access all data in the systems and that users are prohibited for security reasons from downloading, installing, altering or bypassing security measures on all electronic devices, um, and network equipment and other software, online security measures without the written consent of the network manager, director, technology and the superintendent. And that all users must adhere to password requirements and protect sensitive data as much as possible. Also talks a little bit about personal devices, use of personal devices at the discretion of the administration and that the district is not responsible for personal device security or laws. And then it goes talking about consequences for violations, uh, that may result, as well as liability for the district, um, and talking a little bit about making sure that, um, that would not otherwise be provided in the applicable collective bargaining agreement. So the liability section basically explains what the district assumes no responsibility for. And then compliance, that just all users, including employees, students, and annually verify that they have and will abide by the acceptable use policy and that they need to sign a policy each year and that, actually, the, the acceptable use policy will be reviewed annually by the Superintendent Director and, um, and the Director of Technology Enrollment and Information yearly. So to somewhat summarize, um, in this, the policy emphasizes really responsible use of technology, the protection of sensitive information and really the educational purpose and digital resources in the school. Anyone have any questions?
Sounds like a technology policy to me.
Forward.
What's up?
Don't be an idiot.
This is more about the teachers than it is about the students.
Yeah, yeah, the students have, this is a general policy for employees, but it, it, the scope, it outlines some school-wide.
Guess they can't make fun of Eric anymore.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions, further questions or comments? Roll call.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lisa, thank you.
See everyone.
Have a good day, Lisa.
Thank you.
See you later.
Excited to be back. Well, Lisa, do you want to just share about the website because I think it's important?
Yeah. Oh, sure. I almost made it, but I'm excited to talk about the website. We have a new refreshed website and so we're very excited about that. And it, it enables us to have more accessibility for the users, to be able to provide, um, I think easier access for our parents, our students and the community. And we'll be able to showcase all the great things that we're doing here at Great Lowell, certainly with some more video as well as images and just making it a little bit more friendly for, certainly for students, um, to, to be excited about accessing the website as well. And so, um, so we're looking forward and, and we'll be happy to have any feedback and how we can improve it.
Looked good today. I was jumping around on it. Worked easy.
Good.
Worked easy.
Great, and so keep, keep tuned for our, for our new, new content that will be.
Yeah, have we gotten the drone picture yet?
Not quite yet. We, we'll be having some, some new video on the front page and what's nice about this new, um, this new website is you'll be able to switch from video to pictures more seamlessly. So it'll give us a little bit more flexibility in being able to showcase all the great specialty programs.
Cool. Is there something with the languages too?
There is. So we have accessibility for the languages. There's a translate button right there.
Yeah.
And we're working hard to put documentation in as many languages as possible, so that's being updated continually as well as for accessibility.
So, so if someone in another language pushes this button, is, does it actually change the?
Yes.
The lettering and everything?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, um, not the actual documents, you have to do that document by document and we're working to get those documents in as many languages as possible.
Cool.
So it changes the actual features on the website, but not the actual documents that we've added to the website? We work hard to translate all our documents into the languages of our families.
And make them accessible.
And make them accessible.
Quick question. How, how many languages do we have?
Well, we have, we have multiple languages. The one that's what the website provide, many more languages than even.
Oh, so they're all there available, not just what we have.
Yes, because our, our languages are constantly changing as well.
Yeah.
Every year, there's new languages that are coming into our communities. So to make the website able for any new language that would come in, to be able to access our information is important.
Beautiful.
And if there's an.
Wasn't readily available before then.
The webmaster.
It's just more accessible.
And certainly ask, um, see if we can.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Actually, again, Lisa.
Oh, do we approve? We did approve. That was just for the website, so, um, thank you.
That's true.
And that is the end of my report. Thank you.
All right. Sure. Hello, sir. I have two, two items for you on the agenda tonight. I don't know if I'm going in the correct, correct order, but the first one here is the transfers with the contract settled after the budget was created. There's a number of transfers that needed to be made, um, so this was, I should clarify that this was, the teacher's contract was included in the original budget that was passed. So this is everything that's settled after, so our call, administrative, non-contractuals, individual contracts, tutors, everyone that, pretty much all the contracts that were.
Motion to approve three hundred thirty thousand dollars and nine, three hundred thirty thousand and ninety-nine dollars, transfers.
Questions, comments? On the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approve unanimous. Uh, the other item on the agenda tonight is an update on our modular construction project because I'm sure you noticed it's not complete as it was intended to be for the beginning of the school year. It's actually not even, doesn't even look much like a construction project yet, so just wanted to give you an update as to the reasoning behind that. And that comes down to when you do modular construction, the general contractor is, has the responsibility of having the foundation engineered to meet the load of the building. So they have general parameters that go up for what the building needs to be, what energy codes needs to be, what the foundation needs to be, what codes need to be met on that foundation, but they're, they're responsible for the design. So since our construction meeting started in February, I believe, so we've had weekly conversations about where this plan is, where is the structural plan, where's the engineering behind it? And, you know, we got.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately, it didn't come to fruition yet. Two weeks ago, the GC fired their engineer and hired a new one. The new engineer is working much more collaboratively and quickly, it seems, with our architects and actually had a draft that, the draft that, the first draft that hasn't been kicked back within less than twenty-four hours came in on Tuesday, I believe, so they've had forty-eight hours of running calculations and it looks good so far.
That's a good sign.
But there's still, I think there's about a hundred pages of calculations, they say, when you do a foundation engineering report, so they get some ways, ways to go on the reporting end and the approval side of it, but it appears as though we're moving now a little bit more expediently than we have been. The buildings are actually in the city of Lowell already. They're in a storage yard.
That was my next question.
Uh, they're, they're sitting somewhere, I believe they said it was on Pine Street. Uh-oh, so I don't know. I don't know where that is myself.
On Pine Street? I live right off of Pine Street.
Yeah, that's in their neighborhood. Maybe they're in New Yad.
I'll get to the exact.
No, they're not.
You can drive by and find.
I'm going to the Pine School. It's probably the only lot big enough on Pine, right?
Yeah, that would be my guess.
They're in Lowell?
Wood School?
We're here.
Pine School, the old Pine Street School.
I didn't see them there. I live in.
Yeah, I know. I just wondered. Wait. I'll have to look a little closer. I can get you exactly. I drive by every day.
I can get you an exact location so you can drive by and take a look at the wrapped buildings, but they're here in the city.
Wow.
So after the foundation dra- approved, or drawings are approved, it takes a couple of weeks for permitting, um, and then after permitting, the foundation should be going in, so we're probably looking at about six weeks until the buildings move from the city and get craned together here on a weekend. Different contractors been working to make sure the site's secure while school's back in session and they're clear about working hours and not interrupting the educational process here and making sure that anything that does have to happen in the building is occurring from two to ten at night, or we're starting to plan a bunch of weekend work now where they're gonna even start doing some of the tree work in two weekends and some of the excavation work that they had to do to make up for the compensatory storage for the floor zone permitting. So they're gonna start knocking some of that stuff out on the weekends and then we're gonna start seeing, I think, some interior demo and at least preparing for when the buildings are here, um, so that.
Are they like prefabbed?
Things that should come together.
Prefabbed in sections and then they gotta put it all together?
Yep, yeah, it still takes probably about two, their, their initial estimate was about two to three months after the buildings are onsite to gather them fully fabricated, put together. They have to do the interior finish. They don't do things like VCT tile and, um, those types of things before they ship because of the fragile.
Is there?
The movement of the buildings, they break things on the way.
Is, is there a connection to this building to that?
Yep, there's a connection that they have to build both on the first and second floors, so there's gonna be a skywalk bridge out of the second floor, out of an old, what was an old closet, over to the new building.
So down in the, uh, we call it the new wing, but.
Yeah, the new wing.
Down in the new wing, yeah. Connection will come through there.
So they're gonna, they're gonna start prepping at least for that, those items, but at this point, it looks like we're not gonna be online with the buildings until probably late December, January, at best case. That's still, might be a little bit optimistic, but that's, that's where we stand and they have been put on notice about liquidated damages, um, had lenders sent, so there shouldn't be any surprises that we're not gonna be paying full price because we're gonna miss the deadline by.
Six months. A while.
Six months, yeah.
Well, this was, Ken.
Yep, I checked with the, the grant office as well, made sure that the funding wasn't in danger because we were supposed to be fully obligated by September thirtieth and part of their initial obligation, uh, approval process involved the building permit, which we can't get till we have a foundation in place, um, so we won't have a building permit by that time.
September thirtieth.
But the contract, um, sufficed for the approval of the grant and making sure that the funding's all locked up. Uh, we have, we have to file for late liquidation. It's just a form I have to fill out that says we're gonna request funds after.
September thirtieth?
December, December thirtieth or December first would have been the last date to normally draw those funds because the project's gonna extend likely beyond that. We'll draw the funds a little bit later, but probably a couple of months.
As long as we stop before December first, we'll be covered.
We should be, we should be in good shape.
The state's not gonna question the SO money, how we're spending it because it's already been put in the books, all approved. There's some delays after delay after delay.
Yep, we've seen the contracts, they've seen the approval, the approvals that have gone through, they have some permitting, we've got utilities permits and demo permits and some of the smaller ancillary things that have occurred, like the electricals all run, we're gonna have to shut down tomorrow to get the new breaker hooked up that's gonna feed that building, um, for a little bit in the morning, so there's, there's been some progress, it's just obviously not, not near where we thought it would be at this point.
It's in delay, but it's coming.
It's on the way.
To be continued.
Yep. So since this is going, so since this project's now gonna go on while school's going on, all the contracts in it, they go through a Cory check? Since kids are gonna be on campus? Even, even the summer contractors also need Corys. Uh, anyone that's contracted that works onsite is subject to the Cory process and we'll review everyone that comes in and out and then they still all check in and out of security even though they haven't been in the building. Um, they're still checking in, getting badged out and then walking over to the site fit for the work that needs to get done. Okay, all right, cool, thank you.
Very good.
That's that.
Thanks, Mike, sir. Thanks.
Anything on road business? Anything for new business? Committee person motions? Uh, report to the subcommittee, do I have a, a motion to approve the Building Expansion Committee report of June twentieth, twenty twenty-four?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, comments? On the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approve, unanimous. Uh, need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws thirty A, Section twenty-one A and two.
So moved.
To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-contractual LPN personnel. We will, uh, need to return to open session after this to take a vote. Uh, so motion of going to executive session.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approve, unanimous. We will be back in a few minutes, folks. Thank you very much.